Lights on up there, so we are ready to start. So I want to welcome all of you this evening, and I'll call the meeting to order. And would you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag? Okay, Teresa, our roll call.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Callen.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Cope.
Here.
Mayor Knoblauch.
Here.
Okay. And we have a shorter agenda this evening, but first on the agenda is business from the public. Is there anyone here that would like to bring an item forward? Yeah, Dan? Just state your name for the record and address.
Okay, I'm Dan Meltenberger, and I live at 2825 Jackson Southeast, Albany, Oregon. And I guess I'm a tenant out at the airport. I built four hangars out there, and two of them are ten-unit hangars, and two of them are box hangars. And so I try to keep my part of my contract, keep my buildings in good shape, abide by the rules in my contract. But, you know, I go to the airport advisory meetings, and I try to persuade them to sweep the asphalt, take care of the weed spraying, and it seems like they come up short on doing a good job. I can't remember when they did sweep the asphalt last. So a rock or something like that can damage a prop, and it could be $7,000, $12,000 to somebody, not me maybe, but someone else, and I just, regular maintenance, you ought to have the dang thing swept. Okay, so, say about four years ago, five maybe, three of us went out and sprayed the fence line and around the buildings and stuff, and it looked really nice. And of course, the city can't have people without credentials spraying, so they send city people out there to spray, but they don't spray where we need it sprayed. So we got weeds problems and stuff, and I just think that it's been suggested over and over how to do it, where to do it, and it keeps coming up, not done, you know, kind of thing. So then, one thing that kind of fired me up was when they needed to have an ADA bathroom, they converted it, and the building maintenance people did the job, but they broke the sheet rock in the wall, and they left it that way, and painted over it, and it's still, you can walk in there, and it's broke today. Originally hung a towel dispenser that had a rivet missing, didn't operate right. Finally, that was put in. But now, there, the other day, they replaced the urinal in the men's bathroom. And so I says, "Why did you replace the urinal?" "'Cause it stunk." I says, "Well, all you have to do is flush it." They said it didn't have a pee trap. And I says to the guy, "Well, now, you tore it off the wall. Why don't you break it open and see if it don't have a pee trap?" Well, he already took it to the dump or something. I says, "Well, didn't it hold water? That's a sign that it's got a pee trap in it." So if a maintenance person don't know there's a pee trap in a urinal, and that's why he's replacing it, 'cause he thinks he's got sewer gas instead of not flushing, it's a big expense. I don't know what a urinal costs, probably a thousand bucks, you know? But anyway, I think that the airport advisory committee has been a great benefit to the airport. A lot of things have been done, especially working on the budget. And I was greatly surprised when the city manager came to a meeting a while ago and said that the airport advisory commission had nothing to do with the adjustments of the expenses at the airport. And it's been well over $10,000 difference a year in our budget, maybe more like 15 or so, at least from what it was when the advisory commission first started. So I thought that they have done a great job on that kind of a thing. And they wanted to have their meetings out at the airport instead of here at City Hall, because then if you're talking about an airport issue, you could go out and look at it. But I was surprised when the airport manager said he was uncomfortable having a meeting out there with the airport advisory commission. It seemed silly to me, so I just thought I'd bring that up. That seemed to be a problem. I think it's better out there than in here, but I guess they're going to have them here from now on unless something changes. So I know that's not all good stuff, but I think the airport's doing well. And I just think that, another couple of things was that I think the airport advisory commission, as an advisory commission, should be at least brought up to things like when they're gonna not, where are they gonna put a fence when they put a fence in? And if they're gonna modify the FBO, it's for the convenience of the people, more or less, that use the airport, so why not talk to the people that use the airport more about how the place is gonna be altered? And so they've done some work there. I heard it was $18,000, but I've done some work on places, and if that's $18,000, I wish I had a hat I could eat, you know, 'cause that's a very high price for the little bit of work that's been done out there, but I guess that's just things that grind me. Anyway, I'm just a tenant out there, and I'd like things kind of done in a timely manner. And I do my part, I think. If I don't, you can tell me, I can take it. But I'd like somebody to do the other side of the deal. The weeds, the sweeping, that kind of thing makes the place look like, I'd be proud of the thing if it was kept up a little bit better. Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, sorry to, you know, disappointed on some of the maintenance. So, I mean, we can have staff give us an update on the maintenance sometime, but it, you know, resources are real tight, so we could end up needing to review and look at fees to the, you know, to the airport users, you know, in order to be able to enhance the maintenance.
Yeah.
So we can check into that.
I'm not, you know, I haven't got a great deal of assets. I can, I can do my stuff, but I pay my part, you know, my taxes and my leases on the airport. And so as long as I'm doing that, you know?
Good, yeah.
I just expect a little fair trade, read the contract, go by that.
Okay.
That's what I do. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? So, okay. So, is it Rick?
Yeah.
I think I met you on Monday. Were you wanting to bring something to the council?
I just wanted to be here.
Oh, you just said, okay. I saw you brought in the drawing, so I didn't know if you were planning.
I think they're already put.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, anyone else from business from the public? Okay, all right, thank you. And next is adoption of the resolution. And Jeff, you wanted to give a report on that? This is a resolution on page five.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a real brief staff report tonight. Evening, Mayor, councilors. So at the January 12th council work session, staff updated council on the North Albany floodplain study and FEMA's plans to release updated flood insurance rate maps. As a quick summary, FEMA's new maps will show a previously unmapped floodway through North Albany and significant differences in both the depths and extents of flooding. Once the new maps are adopted by FEMA, it will have flood insurance implications for some North Albany residents. As we talked about, though, if people engage and work with a qualified agent and follow some very specific steps, only the people being newly mapped into the 100-year floodplain boundary should see increased flood insurance costs as a result of the new maps. And that's because they're paying for insurance that they weren't required to pay previously. At the work session, we discussed that elevation certificates are tools that property owners can use to help control their flood insurance costs. Elevation certificates are typically completed by a land surveyor, and they document very site-specific conditions such as the size, location, and number of foundation vents, ground elevations, finished floor elevations, as compared to the anticipated flooding that's going to occur on a specific parcel. The work session, staff requested that council consider providing a grant-style of program using up to $100,000 of sewer economic development money to fund elevation certificates for people facing potentially negative financial impacts as a result of FEMA's new maps. So as a reminder, the city has no direct role in flood insurance. It's a FEMA program. The city has no obligation to fund elevation certificates, or really to provide any assistance at all. But staff felt like since the city initiated the study, that's led to FEMA updating their maps, that it would be nice to provide some sort of assistance for them. That being said, at the, at the work session on the 12th, council expressed some, some very legitimate shortcomings to that approach, and asked that we bring back a resolution to formalize their request, but also to allow you more time for consideration. That resolution's on page five of your council packet. Over the last couple of weeks, I've done a lot of reconsidering as well, based on, based on the discussion that we had. And as much as we like to come with a suggested path forward or recommendation for you when we, when we come in front of you, on this one, I gotta say, I'm kind of 50/50 at best. So here's where I see the pros and cons of doing it and not doing it. If we're to fund the elevation certificates for some residents, it would be a good way to help them through the complex world of FEMA's insurance rating process, lessen their time commitments by shifting that burden to staff, and it would also provide some financial support. In all, I think it helps demonstrate some compassion on, on the part of the city. On the other hand, flood insurance and floodplain maps are FEMA's responsibility. By the city taking an active role in what's typically a process between FEMA, the landowner, and their agents, it blurs the lines in an already confusing process between what, what the city does and what, and what FEMA does. So the last thing I'll mention is that even if property owners fund their own elevation certificates and council chooses to not fund this grant-style program, we can still answer questions, we can still consult with, with Gail at Hagan-Hamilton Insurance so that they can consider different approaches specific to their situation. So in other words, I think there's still an opportunity for us to be able to provide a significant amount of valuable assistance, it just wouldn't be monetary. With that, I'll turn it over for discussion, and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions? Counselor? Yeah, Bessie?
I have one. Jeff, I've been looking at this map, and this is kind of on the pro side of the people getting out. Can you tell me, the people on the north side of East Thornton Lake, are they all coming out of it? I mean, it looks like there's pink there, that, that some will be coming out.
You're looking at the map from the last work session?
I am.
I'd have to come grab it from Ian.
Okay, all right. And I just, I just wondered if they were all coming out, or if it's just part of them, or if that's just a line? Okay. That's fine.
So specific to East Thornton Lake Drive, the map that Counselor Johnson's referring to is the map that showed the comparison between the 2010 FEMA maps and, and what would, would be the 2015 FEMA maps. We had the, the properties that would be newly mapped into the floodplain, or the area that's newly mapped into the floodplain, shown in red; areas that would be newly mapped out of the floodplain in pink; and the common areas, so they're in the old floodplain map, and the new floodplain map, shown in blue. So in the East Thornton Lake area, or the East Thornton Lake Drive area, there's a little finger of floodwater there, and there's some pink area where, that would be coming out, and some blue area that would be remaining in. And in there, I don't see anything that fully encompasses a parcel. I see some that are, where the structures are up away from the, from the flood area, so I don't know if there's maybe one home there that might be coming out, you know, on that specific street, and other ones that, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, I was gonna say, 'cause it-
Without zooming in on the specific parcel.
'Cause I know with the, the codes that we had set, that it really affected some of those properties, and I just wondered if, if some of them are, is it just because of the different elevations of the different properties? Is that what it is that would make them so that they don't, that one would and five wouldn't?
If you're, if you're referring to like the Goal Five process that affected-
Yeah, that's what it was, Goal Five, thank you.
-East Thornton Lake and West Thornton Lake properties, you know, those, those were mostly within a buffer area in close proximity to the lake. And while there's some changes in the depths of flooding along the lake system, there's no great difference in the, in the area that's, that's changing along there. There is, as you can, there's some pink and some red around the fringes, but no-
Yeah.
...large groups of areas, like you see far east of, of Spring Hill Drive, where there's areas being moved in.
It's kind of like there's no rhyme or reason as to if they're all, I mean, why they wouldn't all be, or all wouldn't be, but I was just, I was just curious.
If my properties are moving in or out, is directly related to the, the elevations on their specific parcel and the anticipated flood, elevation of the floodwaters? So it, it varies with the contours of the land.
Contours. All right, thank you.
Welcome.
Any other questions? Yeah, Rich?
I guess I would ask whomsoever this applies to, has the city in the past, when what the city does causes people to have to pay more, have we bailed them out? And if we have, you know, is there kind of a, has it happened a lot, or a little bit, or, you know?
Short answer is yes. In fact, I can think of one case that occurred not long ago, where, there was a case where there was no particular evidence of city negligence, and the council opted to pay a property owner for some damage to his property. We've had precedent for that in the past with other property owners, sewage backup, that sort of thing. The city has had different forms of assistance programs. I dealt with one today, sewer lateral replacement program, which I think, I don't know, say it's rare, we did it in Woodrand too, but Floyd tells me they did it in Salem, so. But that's, again, a case where a service lateral is technically the property or the responsibility of a property owner. And, you know, many cities would require the property owner to maintain it. We have a program to help offset people's costs. So yes, there are programs that we have.
I'm just concerned that we don't want to set a precedent that is going to leave us hanging out there. If we already do some, and it is happening all over, well, I'm not much of a problem with it. I would like to see the, so to some extent, the city helping the people involved to, everybody get together to have a single surveyor, or that kind of thing, that is going to do them probably as much good as this, this would.
And we would certainly attempt to try to, if we were to move forward with this program, attempt to combine as many of them into, into one surveying activity as we could to try to recognize the cost savings associated with it. That, it's not going to be possible to do just one activity, because we don't know how all the lenders are going to respond to FEMA's release of the map. Some of them will, will notify the, the mortgage holders, you know, virtually immediately, and require that they do things. Others might take several years. And so it's, it's unfortunately a very convoluted process because of all the different parties that are involved, with which the city does not, is not associated with.
What is the, is the function of, of when the, when it goes in or out of the floodplain, is that just a function of what the level of, of the floor of their property is, or something that's, you know, you could sit in one spot and pick the floor, and that one, and that one, and that one, and that one, all shooting them so you know what the level is? Or is it convoluted rules that you need a lawyer and 17 helpers to figure out?
Yes and yes.
Oh. You could've talked all night and not said that.
Unfortunately, it's, it's based on very site-specific conditions, and depending on what those conditions are dictate the different processes under FEMA's rules.
Okay.
For somebody that's being moved in, or that's already in the floodplain, and is experiencing more flooding, and so they want to do an elevation certificate to try to, to control their cost to what they were pre, before the new maps, the elevation certificate can, can help them get to that. But they're going to be collecting all of that, you know, crawl space elevations, garage floor elevations, living, living floor elevations, how big the vents are, where they are, do they have any on the garage, what's the adjacent, I mean, it gets, it's pretty intense.
Convoluted.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right, right.
Wes, did I infer, I'm inferring from what you said about some of the precedent potentially has been from properties that have already had incurred some material damage, and the city's trying to step in and try and help in some way? Whereas this is anticipating trying to help a potential need down the road?
(laughs) Have to think about that. And there is a difference between this one and the other programs that I cited, in that the city is only, as Jeff pointed out, we're only indirectly involved in the floodplain issue. We had believed that the floodplain as established by FEMA was not accurate, and so we asked to have it looked at again. We had it done and established that we were correct, there were problems. And then it's now FEMA that's saying, because of the new, newly discovered information, that some people are now in the floodplain and some are out. So again, it was an indirect relationship to the city's action, so it's different in that respect. And the other programs that I cited, you, you've almost sort of taken a case-by-case basis on, you know, whether or not you would, you know, reimburse a property owner for damage that they've suffered. On the, on the sewer lateral replacement, that's kind of yet another sort of issue. It's to the city's advantage to get old sewer laterals replaced, because it cuts down on the inflow and infiltration, so-called INI, into our system. And, and we recognize that it's a pretty big burden for citizens to bear. But they may or may not, although I would say usually, they probably have had some issue, not necessarily damage, before laterals replaced. So it's-
Thank you.
May I urge you not to make your decision based on concern about precedent or lack of precedent? There is no legal precedent that is troublesome here. You should make your decision, I submit, based on whether you think this is inappropriate and suitable expenditure of public funds. There are no, for example, there's no obligation to have a library. You fund a library because you think it is useful to a large number of citizens. There's no obligation to have a pool. You fund a pool because you think it is useful to a large number of citizens. This is strictly a policy judgment of whether you think the benefit to the affected community members is appropriate as a city burden. If pure policy, don't worry about precedent in terms of legal precedent, where someone else could compel you to contribute because you contribute here, or where someone can say you must contribute here because you contributed somewhere else. There is no, precedent has no role in your decision, except philosophically.
Any other questions? Yeah, Floyd?
You know, this is, I think there's no right answer. I'm kind of where Jeff is. Well, what I do like about the proposal is it provides a systematic way to approach a problem that was neither the creation of the property owners, nor the creation of the city. We simply said, the map does not match with reality, what's happening in the field. We recognize that, we don't know why, we found out. It's not the property owner's fault that they were allowed to build down there. But my concern would be, if we didn't help in some systematic way, it's going to be a hodgepodge. And then when that happens, we're going to have some very upset citizens, 'cause some will be treated equitably by people involved, and some may not be. If we have a systematic approach to it, we'd be relatively sure that everybody would be treated equally. So I for one am in support of this.
Except for those that are being pulled out of it, yeah.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, Bill?
Well, just a comment, to echo what Floyd said. I agree, and I, I like what you said, Jeff, that you would try and work with the folks, whether it be, you know, workshops, or town hall meetings, or whatever, because I think that the, the city can take the charge on this, and certainly give some examples of how the citizens might benefit, as an example of having one surveyor to come out there and, you know, take the charge, walk them through the processes, help, and be an asset there for them. Some people may not even care about the financial part of it. They may be more concerned with the procedure, and gosh, you know, what am I supposed to do? Other people may need the financial help, and we've got that there for them. So I guess my desire, if, if the resolution passes, is that the city does take the lead and become an asset and a good neighbor to, to work with these folks.
Certainly do that.
Okay. All right. Counselor, what would you like to do with that resolution on page five?
Move adoption. Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carried. Thank you, Jeff. Okay, counsel, next you have adoption of the consent calendar, and if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off for discussion this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Item number two.
Number two, okay.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar with the exception of item number two.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item number two is on page 18, and Counselor, what would you like to have questions on that item?
Um, is, does this take care of all of Grace Point's needs for being slowed down or held up, or, or in compliance, or whatever it is? Is this kind of the last thing in the line, or is this just one of many?
There is, there's one other item, it's a waterline easement, in which we had originally hoped to get on this council agenda, except they provided us some, excuse me, incorrect documents. However, we're not holding them up for that, since they have signed that easement, we're not holding up their project based on not getting that to council, even though it was an error on their part.
No, there's, there's no holdup being done at all for any reason, is what I'm asking.
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay, thanks.
Jeff's last.
Then I move for adoption.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Okay, next is award a bid for the Century Drive lift station improvements. This is on page 30. And Mark, did you have any words to say on that?
Your Honor, before we do that, the company that I work for will be performing the electrical work on this project, so I will recuse myself from any discussion or voting on this issue.
All right, thank you. Okay, Mark, anything you need to say?
Well, this project is to, to update this station. It's a station that requires quite a bit of maintenance, and so this project should cut down on the number of times we have to visit it and fix it. I think you'll see the bids came in well, and we're well under budget, and you'll notice, as council's been interested previously, if, if we have any local contractors bidding on this. And you'll see R.L. Reimers from Albany, RNG Excavation from SIO, Emery &amp; Sons from Salem, they didn't get the project. Pacific Excavation out of Eugene did get the, the project, but we did have, did have local bidders, they just weren't the low bid in this case.
Okay, all right. Questions, counsel? Not a motion?
Move a ward of bid. Second. To the low, successful bidder.
Okay, motion's been made in a second. Any discussion? Bessie?
I was gonna say, there seem to be a, what the engineers estimate is, there seem to be a big range of bids, and I just wondered, Mark, do you think that's because some are hungrier than others, or, I mean, like Emery &amp; Sons were way up to 301, and that was-
It could be a factor of how many projects they have on the books, what other projects they have in the area. There's a lot of factors. It's, it's hard to determine.
Yeah, I know, you know, they're all, we've dealt with a lot of the businesses before, and so, you know, they're reputable, but- and so, you know, they're reputable, but, I mean, there was such a variation of bids, and so I was just wondering, so, other than that, it's fine.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, so that's, motion's carried with a 5-0 since Bill, Bill was abstaining. Okay, next is code enforcement semi-annual report in Maryland. It looks quite nice, it's been very active, and many, I can't, it's amazing how many cases were closed last year, that's wonderful, so.
Yeah, thank you, that little cases closed, we still have the big ones that take us forever, and we're still working on those, but we have seen a little bit of progress on a few of them. Got another complaint just yesterday on the Jefferson Court duplex, and we're working on that one, and the property on 34th Avenue is indeed for sale, so that's a, that's a good sign. Wanted to also let you know that this weekend, there's going to be a huge cleanup at, the beginnings of a huge cleanup, at the Waverly Masonic Cemetery. The Horticulture Club at LBCC has taken the lead on that, and they've mustered a couple of other groups to help them out, but they're going to be cleaning up a wooded, sort of wooded natural area, a natural in terms of scrub trees and blackberries and ivy and other things that don't need to be there. Way at the back of the cemetery, we'll be cleaning that out. That will help us clean out a problem area for the police department. That's been a sort of boondoggle junior for the last couple of years, and it's a chronic problem for the railroad end, for the Masonic Cemetery. But they're starting that cleanup, we expect it to take several weeks over several months, and the goal, they're working with our city forester, Megan Schutz, to clear out trees that don't need to be there. The trees will be repurposed either through Helping Hands Firewood Program, or through sawing for schools, depending on what's appropriate, and we hope to end up with a nice, open area that's an amenity rather than a problem.
And who'd you say was helping with the cleanup?
LBCC Horticulture Club is taking the lead on that.
Oh, wonderful, yeah.
Maryland, where is it? Did you say Masonic?
Oh, the Masonic Cemetery, the Waverly Cemetery. It's on the north side of Salem Avenue, at Albany Avenue, by Waverly Lake. This is just, just north, this section is just north of the Jewish Cemetery portion.
Yes, all right, okay.
Great.
Yeah, that's great.
Looking forward to that.
It's what you would drive into if you didn't stop.
Basically, yeah.
Exactly.
Oh, people are just dying to get there.
I can also announce that we've chosen our neighborhood for the big pickup this year.
Which one?
It will be the neighborhood around the wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, okay.
We've done that before, we're going to, we're going to start at the treatment plant, that'll be our staging area, the dumpsters will be there, and we've decided that in addition to helping neighbors in the neighborhood, we want to be good neighbors as well, and we're going to be doing some tidying up around the operations yard, as well as picking up stuff from the neighborhood. Saturday, May 16.
Saturday, May 16.
Yep. Actually, we're asking people to bring things to us. If they need things picked up, we'll arrange that ahead of time.
Good, yeah, great. Okay, any questions for Maryland on the code enforcement report? Yeah, Bill?
It's probably a question for the city attorney or the police chief, but on this 181 34th Avenue, and talked about working to declare it a specific crime property, I was curious how that works.
There's a process of notices to the property owner, opportunities to correct, and at the end of the process, we can get an order from a circuit court closing the property to occupancy. And so for a property owner that seeks to make an economic use of their property, it's a fairly threatening club, but it is, like most legal processes, time-consuming.
It's great that it's for sale, but it could sit there for years for sale, so I was just glad to hear you're still pursuing other options. I've spoken to a constituent a couple of times, and visited the property and so forth, so have become really more familiar with it than I wanted to.
Great, yep. Chief must have a few words.
To answer your question, we still need another distribution case off of that property before we can declare it for specified crimes, but we're still working on trying to get it cleaned up.
Good.
Great.
It has been. I've had many phone calls over that property, so, yeah, thank you, thank your hard work on it, and also for working with the neighborhood. Okay, anything else on code enforcement?
I can just add one more thing on Jefferson Court. Our goal is to get that taken care of in some fashion before the end of this summer, because we're redoing Sunrise Park this summer, dramatically redesigning it and replacing the playground equipment, and changing the orientation of some of the features there, and this is right adjacent to it, and it is one big bad eyesore. And it's dangerous, so we're really working hard on that.
Good, thank you.
Good job.
Okay, all right, sit on that item, and next is the airport base operator contract, and I see Chris coming up forward.
Well, I'm excited to talk with you about the potential for what I think is a positive development for the airport. You have some information in your memo, and I wanted to provide a little bit of additional background and information on details of the potential new FBO at the airport. So, as I'm sure you know, the airport has been without an FBO for about five years now, and it has been an ongoing goal of staff, the Airport Advisory Commission, and counsel to try to generate some interest and attract a new FBO for the airport. With input, a lot of input from the Advisory Commission, we issued an RFP twice for FBO services in 2011. We did not receive any responses that were worthy of really entering into. As a matter of fact, some of the proposals asked that the city pay the FBO to provide the services, so not really a great deal for the airport. So we closed the RFPs and continued on as we were. Since the previous FBO left, the city, well, even while they were still there, the city was responsible for managing the fuel sales, so we ordered, tracked, and set the price for fuel at the airport. Once the FBO left, we worked with volunteers, members of the Airport Advisory Commission, to keep the FBO building a welcoming place for visitors. So we changed the door locks to allow 24-hour access, and we've leased out the airport, or the hangars attached to the FBO building for aircraft storage. We leased out some of the individual office spaces in order to try to maximize the amount of revenue we could generate from that building, even though there was not an FBO as a tenant there. So last fall, we were approached by an individual who had a proposal that very closely matched the RFP requirements, and we began discussing with him his business idea and concept for an FBO, and began negotiating terms for a lease agreement. The lease agreement that we have developed requires the FBO to provide certain aviation services. Initially, aircraft maintenance and aircraft storage. He'll also provide 24-hour access to the pilot lounge, which would include a computer for flight planning and Wi-Fi and a place to rest, things like that. And towards that end, we did do some renovations of that office space, which Dan mentioned. Basically, we did a little bit of demolition and created a new wall, which allowed, will allow the FBO to have a lockable business space while keeping the majority of the lounge open and available for the 24-hour access. We've done a little bit of work on the men's room, painted some things. That building, as if you've been in there recently, needs quite a bit of work. This is just a little bit of work, and will be a benefit for whoever's in that building. So additionally, the FBO will take over the management of the fuel sales, so he will be responsible for ensuring there's adequate fuel, ordering, setting the price, et cetera. He will receive all the revenue from the fuel sales, but he'll pay a flowage fee to the city, which is a very common setup where municipalities own airports. The initial business proposal is specific to offering some services for light sport aircraft, which are a newer type of general aviation aircraft that are very popular. We have quite a few light sport aircraft out at our airport right now, as well as general aviation maintenance. He's also shared his thoughts and goals with us on expanding his business, such as adding flight instruction, a flying club, perhaps offering automobile gas, what they call MO gas, which is, can be used in quite a few engines now, and has been in demand. It's something we actually looked at doing as well. And those things would potentially happen as the business case can be made to add those things to his business. So the contract would call for him to lease the north building and the hangars for $1,500 a month. He'll also take over the payment of the utilities, and will pay the flowage rate, as I mentioned. The city will lose the revenue from the fuel sales, which we currently capture all of the revenue from the fuel sales, which gives us a little bit of profit on the sale of fuel. But we also lose the expenditures of having to purchase the fuel, which is quite large, and for paying those utilities. So overall, the impact is basically neutral on the budgets, very slight in the plus for this next year. I have a spreadsheet, if you would like to see some details on that, but it's, it was designed to essentially be neutral. In the worst-case scenario, the agreement, similar to the previous FBO agreement, allows the city to terminate the lease if the contract is breached. So as in the case of Reliant, if they fall behind, we can essentially, like with any other lease, initiate eviction and go back to where we are now, which is keeping the building open and managing the fuel ourselves. Best-case scenario, we have an energetic and visionary FBO who has, apparently seems to have a good business model, he seems to have thought it through, he's invested a lot of time and energy already in trying to get his business started. A good FBO, in all likelihood, will attract additional visitors to our airport, which contributes to the local economy, and helps return, give us a return on the investment that the city has made in the infrastructure out there. So we're very excited about the proposal. We hope that you will vote to authorize us to complete the negotiations and sign the contract here tonight, and I'm happy to take questions if you have them.
Any questions? Okay.
I do. Chris, I don't know exactly how to put this, but I, after reading this, it was in the paper, and reading what we have in our packet, it seems like that this has been going on for a couple of months, and it's almost like a done deal. I mean, I went on the web and already basically saying that they're at the Albany Airport. And so I'm a little concerned that we didn't know anything about this until now, and, I mean, we are kind, we are the luck officials, policy setters, and things like that, and so I just wondered if this was going on, why we didn't know at least something beforehand? Because now it's put upon us, and Mr. Han's in the, in the audience, and so it's like, what are we to do?
Well, I went to the, to the Facebook page as well, and the pictures, in my interpretation of that, was that it was photos of the work in progress to get the space ready for them to take occupancy. That work would be necessarily, necessary regardless of who, it was in there. And that work helps us define the space so that it can be usable for an FBO as a business, and also usable after hours for visiting pilots. So he hasn't been in the space any more than any other pilot has been in that space. It's available and open for anyone to go in at any time.
But on another website, it's basically saying, you know, Albany's here, and this is all the information they have on it and stuff, so it's basically like it's a done deal before we even hear about it, and that concerns me.
If I, if I may. I recall giving counsel at least an update at a council, not a formal memo, but that we had a potential FBO in the works, and we're working through the lease, so while I didn't give details, I did inform counsel that this was in the process. It is a process of working with the FBO, then getting it through legal counsel. We want to be careful in not bringing something to you that's not complete, so there is that balance, and you're right, I think the gentleman running the FBO, he's, he's trying to generate interest and excitement in his business, which I think is a good, good sign, but I can understand how you feel somewhat caught off guard, but...
No, I just want to make, it's kind of like counsel has almost bypassed to where it's, you know, like you say, he's generating interest and whatever, but it'd be nice for us to know that a little bit more of what's going on when we're getting close to, I mean, I want to say vetting, you know, vetting the FBO, like, you know, what's the background, what's this, and what's that, and...
Well, and that error would be, rest on me for not giving you maybe some more information, you know, partly with the fact that having an FBO at the airport has been a goal for many years.
Sure, I agree.
Didn't anticipate that it would be a major concern that we actually had a likely FBO here, and just giving you that, that brief update, but for not giving you more detail, that error would let rest on me, so...
Well, if you're really nice and bring me chocolates, maybe I'll forgive. No, you know, and...
Milk chocolate or dark chocolate? You want to make sure.
Dark is good, but no, and, and we need an FBO, and I think Mr. Han, it sounds like he's really enthusiastic and has some good ideas, and the net is so small that net loss or gain or whatever stuff is good, but it was just, it was just a concern of mine and stuff, so thank you, Mark, for explaining, and you too, Chris.
I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay.
We could have done one.
That's all right. You guys just got, let us know, you know? All right.
Chris, could you share just a brief background on the individual, their company, their experience, current location, and what they've previously done?
Sure. So the business name, Infinite Air Center, and it's a new corporation that has been formed by a partnership. Tony Han is the managing partner for this, for the site at the Albany Airport. Tony's background, according to his business proposal, is primarily in IT management, he's a licensed pilot, and, but he's done some other things, including real estate and various development ventures, and so it's a new business for him. And his partners, I'm not sure if they've operated FBOs before, but primarily we've dealt with Tony, and he's been the one that's brought forth the business plan and the ideas. So he has an experienced mechanic that will be working with him, that has some training and expertise in these light sport engines, and initially is going to just have the mechanic and himself with some plans to grow that as business, if his business plan works out.
So given, given the requirement for 24-hour access, will one of the three partners be in the community and be able to respond to the airport?
It's not a requirement of the lease agreement that they be in the community and respond, so I'm not sure. Tony himself is from the Portland metro area, so I'm not sure if there will be someone on staff that lives and is available here locally 24 hours a day.
But we are requiring somebody to be available?
Not in the lease agreement. The lease agreement does not require 24-hour maintenance, you know, aviation maintenance availability.
24-hour availability of the lounge and computer access area?
Right, similar, right, similar to the way it is now. So there will be a pilot lounge area with computer access and Wi-Fi and such.
And if there's a problem, who responds?
Well, so...
Chris?
Yeah, exactly. John?
John?
It rolls downhill. So, you know, I guess my... It rolls downhill. So, you know, I guess my, I haven't confirmed this with Tony, but I would imagine that he will have a phone number available if there's an aviation, you know, mechanical need. That's really up to him to decide how he wants to run his business, if he's going to have that service available. If the council would like us to add that as a requirement, we can discuss that with him. But it hasn't been something that we've discussed yet.
And that wasn't a requirement of the original RFP?
Um, I can't remember exactly.
Well, just a reminder, right now, we have no airplane mechanics out there at all. We have nobody 24 hours a day.
There are airplane mechanics on the airport.
Well, not, not that we have.
Working for us, but there are. I mean, there are people available.
Is that it, Floyd?
Yes.
Okay. Rich, you had one and then Ray.
Yeah. There are a number of things that have been done by the quote "community" out there in the last five years. Is there a clear delineation between what the FBO is going to be doing and then that other stuff that they have, that the community out there has been doing? Is there a plan for taking care of all those things? Who's going to be responsible for, well, I don't know, tie-down, whatever, that is not part of the FBO?
So his lease and agreement is only for the services he provides as a tenant in that building. He will have access to some tie-downs out front, but he's not responsible for maintaining the airport property. The city is still responsible for maintaining the airport property. So if there are tie-down chains that are broken, the fuel system, you know, dies for some reason, the maintenance of that is our responsibility. The maintenance of the runway lights is our responsibility. Just, so he's leasing the building. He's not leasing the airport.
So is there a, I guess, maybe I didn't, I didn't ask it the way I should have. Is there now someone who is the go-to guy, go-to gal, that the airport light doesn't work?
Sure.
Someone, there's a phone call that's made and someone takes care of that?
Yes. John Goldman, the airport manager, transportation superintendent. He wears several hats.
All right. Ray?
I'm the authorized city manager and an agreement with Infinite Air Center as the airport fixed-place operator.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. And any discussion? Bessie?
I was just, I brought up the website and it says that Infinite Air Center will open in Albany Municipal Airport on February 2nd. So that's what I'm saying, it's a done deal. But I would like to see a copy of the agreement. Because, you know, this is our airport and we want to make sure that, you know, what's going on. I mean, it's kind of like we're...
That's what the motion is, is to allow Wes to enter into that agreement and get it to us.
May I clarify? It has been my practice and the city's practice that I don't lay before you every contract, every development agreement, every lease for seven lay folks to negotiate the legal document, frankly. On the other hand, if you want to do that, you can, but you will, I submit, make, create a difficult problem for yourselves if you want to get involved in negotiating, well, I mean, you know, what the cleaning deposit will be and how that's going to be refunded. And so, I mean, what we try to do, and what I think Chris has done in her memo, is we try to give you the overview of what the financial impact, what the authority and responsibility will be, what the term of the agreement will be, and the broad outlines of the agreement so that you can tell us. Now then, if there are specific other things that you want, that you would ask about, like if the council wanted some requirement of 24-hour availability for some form or another, you would tell us to add that to the requirements and it would be my job along with staff to do that. So in fairness, I don't want anybody to misstate. It was not staff's intention, not my intention, to bring you the lease for individual review. It was for staff to give you the overview of what the terms would be. You would authorize Wes to sign it after we work it out. But if there are particulars you want, or if there's a particular contract or lease you want, you have a right to it. The city council has to authorize leases. It is an interest in real property that you own.
So, and thinking back to, for the past 20 years, we haven't had a solid FBO out at the airport. So the FBO that we had for many years, you know, was very devoted but didn't, you know, live up to the bargain. And so then we had to, we spent many, many meetings on this dais over the airport and over the FBO issues. And so now we haven't had an FBO. So this sort of gives us a new chance to be able to try it out again. And we wish them luck and hope that, you know, best wishes that it becomes a good new adventure. So...
The other thing I've got to point out is, please understand, staff can't be responsible for what the FBO potential, what the businessman puts on his website. He shouldn't have done that. You know, in reality, until the council approves it.
No, that's not him.
I beg your pardon. I thought you were the perspective.
No, Mr. Han.
Sorry. Let me move that gaze. Let me move that gaze.
Yes, Hasso. How are you today?
It's Hasso. Oh, I'm sorry.
I would be more than happy to, you know, work in my plan. I had no idea that I was out of line on this kind of marketing.
That's exactly what I thought.
I was out of line.
Well, no, we really appreciate you, you know, really putting in an investment in Albany and, you know, and really, you know, really to be able to help out for our airport. So really appreciate that. And yeah, wish you the best of luck. So, yeah.
I'm going to support the motion. And I think it's important just to make the distinction that we're entering into an agreement for a business on the airport. We're not entering into an agreement for an airport manager.
That's right.
And they have limited function in their business plan, but they are not responsible for the entirety of the airport. That was some of the difficulty we had in the past. It was not clear. And yet, some people had different expectations.
Well, that was my question. You know, this is going to be a finite thing. Is the rest of it taken care of? And I would support it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I support it, but now is the 24, a phone, I mean, some sort of a contact for 24-hour?
Yeah, the city staff would be the sort of the backstop there. I mean, it's a city facility, even though it has...
All right. And that number exists out there now. We can just make sure that as he changes signage or whatnot, that that's clear.
Oh, question.
Sounds great.
Fuel.
Yes, sir.
Time. How much time during, fuel, what kind of, how many hours a day, how many days?
I'm not sure if I understand the question.
How often is, how long is the fuel open each day?
Oh, it's open 24 hours. It's a car lock type system. So they can buy fuel at any time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? There's a motion on the table.
All questions.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right. Thank you, Chris. Okay, thank you.
Good luck, Tony.
Yeah.
I apologize.
Thank you.
That's funny.
You know what happens when you assume.
New FBO.
Okay. Next is business from the council. And Rich, anything this evening?
Two things. Mr. Garaki from Greenberry says that the, there are going to be some apartments finished very quickly. And if the council quote-unquote "would like to come," we can make arrangements to go tour.
Great. That's with innovative housing.
Yes.
Yeah.
The second thing...
And I don't know if maybe they contacted you, Kate, about it?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
And then she's also working on a 24-hour.
Okay, great. Okay.
Second item, we have had some issues with committees doing work outside their job from the legal perspective. And the airport commission is here and, the airport committee is here. And there's a second one that also has that problem from my perspective, and that's in human relations. I mean, what just came up on the website today was telling us that we're supposed to, or that they would like us to have help for people who do not speak English very well. And that went out as a press release, is my understanding, before it came to us. And I guess my question is, who's working for who? If they are supposed to be our committee, so it keeps us out of trouble. Can I finish, please?
Sure.
Stuff should come to us before it goes to public. It has been in the past, once or twice. It seems like when they want something, they come and make a splash about it. And then if we have questions or if we don't agree with something, it's kind of viewed as we're the bad guy somehow. When what should be happening is, it should come to us informally or, you know, as a, we're thinking about this before it gets trumpeted to the, to the public. I mean, the thing that I saw today was, seemed most of it reasonable. And I think most of what their concern is, I think we're already doing with the fire and police at least, have people. But there is the definition of someone who doesn't speak English very well. Does that mean, you know, does that mean that we should have Spanish speakers and Vietnamese and whatever at meetings like this? Or does it, you know, it's imprecise. And before it is out there, I would like to have it more precise.
And Rich?
I would, like Mark, I guess, I'm the one that needs to follow the sword here. That was not a human relations commission initiative. That was a staff initiative in response to a federal requirement, because we receive federal funds, that we have to develop an English language proficiency plan, an ELP. And it seemed to me, because the issue had come up, the HRC had raised the issue in the past about what is the city doing, that it would be good to vet this proposed plan, which was developed by our staff, by our IT director, specifically with help from Marilyn and myself, to vet it through the HRC to see if they thought there was any problem with the proposed plan. And as a way, they could then make a recommendation, which is, you know, part of their responsibility to the council about whether this plan met their needs. But that was initiated not by the HRC. It was initiated by staff, same.
But that, that did not then come to the council. That then went to the website.
Well, what is going, what we have to do is vet the plan. I mean, that's a requirement. You know, you have to give the public an opportunity to comment. And it comes to the council. And the council ultimately can decide, we like it or we don't like it. That's the whole point.
But I'm telling you, I'm saying it should come to the council before it goes out there. Because if you, if you say, it doesn't make any difference what it is. If you can be a good guy or a bad guy if you vote, one way or the other. And there are reasons why you should vote for and against. If it comes to the public and then comes back, then many times it looks like you're the bad guy if you vote against it. And that's not the way it is. It's, for example, with this, define what not very much, you know, and if you vote against it because, well, I don't know what that looks like, it looks like you're voting against people having help with translation. And that's not necessarily the case.
Yeah. And Rich, I think we could probably come up with a better process. To be honest with you, we're sort of following the process that we follow pretty typically with our planning commission, for example. Applications for the planning commission don't come to you first. They come to the planning commission first. They start at staff. The planning commission reviews it. There's an opportunity for public review. And then the council reviews it and makes the ultimate decision oftentimes. And so, I mean, I think that's the sort of theme I was thinking about as we did this required EOP. But there's, it's not mandated that we do it that way. And we could certainly come up with a process that starts more with, you know, involves the counselor at an earlier stage. And I'm happy to do that. And again, but I just want to clarify that if that's a problem, it's not a problem for me at HRC. It's a problem for me. Because I'm just...
Well, I'm saying it happened. I don't know who is responsible. Well, it's you. It's all your fault.
Yeah.
This is what we have. That's right.
I guess you owe Rich some chocolates.
Apparently.
No, no, don't know. Maybe some cashews would be better.
Well, based on our conversation today, I think Brian would rip, right?
There you go.
Dick.
I'm wondering if this particular issue is going to come up with a public hearing before we adopt it?
It doesn't require a public hearing. It's, in fact, there really isn't, at least I'm not aware of, a prescribed process for it. We just thought giving the, you know, giving people an opportunity to comment on something that we're required to do was a good thing.
Well, I think really it's a good idea to have the information out there before we have a public hearing. So many of our public hearings, nobody shows up because they don't know about it. And I'm thinking about our blowing away 2.9 million of our money. And I don't thank hardly anybody in the public, except the various luminaries that showed up in our party here Monday. I don't thank hardly anybody in the public other than them do about it. So I'm all for the public knowing about what we're doing myself. And if I'm a bad guy, so be it. I won't get elected next time.
I'm actually glad we are coming up with a plan, because I've had one person that has called many times, very upset that the city does not have this, you know, this plan. And it's more of a threatening to sue the city if we do not come up with this, this plan. So it's kind of a plan. It's sort of subjective, whether it's a requirement of cities. It's kind of, it can be interpreted both ways. So I just think it's best that we do come up, you know, just to be able to convey anybody's concerns over this, by not having this plan. But, yeah. So, okay. Anything else, Rich?
Yeah.
Okay. Ray? Floyd?
Just to bring forth for tonight, Wes, I think, is already prepared to do it. But given the news that we received on Monday about the signatures on the Loews Agreement, to make sure that we get a release for the community.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Anything, Dick?
Oh, yeah. I want to comment on Bessie's asking about contracts and that kind of thing. If a council person is interested in the fine print details of a contract, we could ask to see the whole darn thing if we feel like.
Public documents, so absolutely.
I'm not. Some people might be.
Sure.
I wanted to make sure that I was correct on that. Thanks.
All right. Bill? Bessie?
No, and I, you know, to answer Dick, it's, a lot of times, we don't, either we read it in the paper first, or it comes in our Friday packet. And if we don't get to it, I mean, I just got to reading it today. And so, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of times, not enough time to ask for it. But, you know, I can understand, you know, what Jim was saying, that, you know, they don't give us all the contracts and everything, you know. But sometimes it's just the timing, you know. And with the, like you said, Mayor, with the past experience with an FBO, you know, you just want to be so careful that we don't get burned again.
We don't want to go through what we did.
Okay. So the, I didn't have really anything, except for part of this was what's in front of you on the dais, on this letter that was sent to me to see if our council wanted to endorse it. And then when I sent it to Mark, you said the FBO reviewed it?
Well, MPO, Metropolitan. And actually, it was the consortium of Oregon metropolitan organizations. So you take Albany, Corvallis... And just a week and a half ago, that organization, that consortium of MPOs, voted to endorse this. You know, your choice whether you want to or not, but that did...
Kind of already have.
Well, yeah. I guess indirectly, you could say, the MPO that we are part of is part of consortium that did approve the consortium sending this letter.
Okay. Counsel, is this something you're interested in, and having your approval to support it? Thoughts, or?
Yes.
All right. Okay. Do we want that maybe in a motion?
You changed, you changed it to where it was not Congressman.
Yeah. We'll have to say, dear Congress members. So...
Female there.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't think, it doesn't matter whether we send it or not. The individual weight of one city is not going to make the difference. By sending it, it says, we recognize that there is a problem in funding the transportation system. That's, that's the message we're sending. I don't know what the right answer is. You know, we're going to be dealing with it at the state legislature. We're dealing with it at the federal level. It's one of those things that's bigger than all of us. So, whether we sign or not, our pastor recently said, there are those things that are true but unnecessary. Doesn't matter whether we sign it.
Yeah.
It doesn't hurt if we sign it. It doesn't do any good if we sign it.
Yeah. It just kind of, we want to show that we know we do need some funding.
We, we are concerned about funding of our transportation infrastructure.
Okay.
I move to sign, to sign off on it.
All right. Second. Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Thank you, Mark. And let's see, did you have another item, or was it Wes that you had something?
I have a couple of things.
Okay. Yeah.
The first is, as Counselor Collins mentioned, we now have fully executed copies of the LOES agreement, the amendment to the original agreement that the city struck with LOES, and we're in regular communication with them, and believe that they're preparing to submit their permit applications, and will have the store completed by the end of this calendar year 2015. We will, we can certainly issue a press release to that effect. We know there's a lot of interest in the community about that project, because it's been in the news on and off for several years now, so. And would like to commend some really great work that Jim did to sort of work through a lot of the details with LOES. And it's, I think, generally been a, you know, a very positive communication and good on both, for both parties. The second issue, we received a letter, Counselor Kellum directed it to me. The, the letter is not addressed to anyone specifically. It's just a letter signed by hotel owners expressing some, expressing concerns about use of transient lodging tax. And I will send copies of that. I should have done it today. In the press, did not get it done. What I'm recommending is that we have a scheduled meeting tomorrow of a group that's been working on TLT for some months, and that's, includes Ed Hodney and Kate have been working on that. It includes representatives from the hotel industry, from the Expo Center, from ABA, you know, the different groups that are involved. And I'm going to make a point of attending as well, and see if perhaps we can, at that level, at least start to address some of the concerns. And if not, or perhaps even if so, bring that back for a council work session here in the not distant future to try and make sure that we're all on the same page. I mean, one of the things that I've seen with, you know, in communities is that oftentimes, there's not a lot of redundancy in how to get things accomplished. There's, you know, there's only a certain number of pathways that get things done. And if you block them off because people aren't talking to one another, or they're dissatisfied with one another, you know, important tasks don't get completed. So, we'll start that and hopefully be back with a proposal to have some, or at least a report in the near future.
After I spoke to you, I went back and spoke to Leah and asked specifically, what is it that, you know, the concern is? And she wrote me back saying, basically, it's not, the letter talks about ABA, but it's really about the efficacy of how all of it is spent. It's not just ABA. It's all of it. And there has been too many eyes, not very much kind of proof in the pudding, as, you know, we spent money, and it looks like some things happened and some things didn't. And from the outside looking in, there isn't a real good idea of whether or not whatever has been happening in all the various places has been working. So, that was made clear to me in the second time around. It's not about one thing. It's about kind of all of it, and whether or not we can see where we're getting what we're looking for. Is, is this what we're looking for?
Try and have that discussion tomorrow.
Yeah.
Question for Wes. How are things? Any more reported information on the, on the canal?
We're scheduled to meet on February 6th, so that's a week from Friday. Whip up.
Okay. All right? That it? Anything else? Mark? Okay. Marilyn? Got her. Okay. Our next meeting is going to be a work session February 9th, and regular session is February 11. And with that, we adjourn. Thank you.